Appeal hearing for for January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March twenty-twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. The hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representatives of elected officials and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to come to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bar bottom of your screen, and the zoom in should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge?
Good evening, Madam Chair, President.
Good evening, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President.
Good evening. The floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're here for the hearing scheduled for five P M. We'll start off with case B O A one-six-six zero-two-six-seven with the address of three oh-five to three oh-seven Meridian Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal?
Hello?
Are you, are you on for three oh-five Meridian?
Yes, we are.
Please proceed. Please add, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Jose Pinera and three oh-five, three oh-seven Meridian Street. Uh, East Boston, zero-two-one-two-eight. Second Hut Restaurant.
Are you presenting?
Yeah, we, we are.
Okay, can you tell us what you're proposing?
Hmm, proposing?
What are you seeking relief for?
Oh, yeah, we right now we need to, uh, you, you let, let Jose explain this one. I don't know very well. What do you want to do in the meeting?
Because I had a like, um, I application for because I want to do the occupancy.
Occupancy?
Occupancy.
Are you seeking to remove a proviso?
I want, yeah, I want to remove like they had a family, family, something the, uh, the name before, so I want for my name, the application there.
Okay, are there any changes to the foot, to the footprint or the interior, or is it just the removal of the proviso?
Nothing changing side, just as a same, just like one without one that coming in this man.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No.
Any questions from the board?
No.
You're none? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no questions.
Okay, uh, may we have public testimony?
All right, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Regarding three oh-five Meridian Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. The restaurant has made no operational changes, and we are not aware of any community concerns at this time. Uh, the mayor's office of neighborhood services defers to the board's judgment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I think is a very simple request, um, to remove the proviso, and therefore I'm putting forward a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
With that, we'll move on to case B O A with the address of six fifty-seven East Fifth Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Miller from McDermott Quilty Miller and Hanley, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. Uh, I am joined tonight by the contractor and owner, Victor Demore. Uh, I believe he is in the attendee section at the moment. Uh, the project before you tonight will return, uh, this long existing home on, on East Fifth Street uh, to the two-family occupancy that uh, that it was originally constructed as. Uh, this renovation will completely update the interior of the building, improving the life, health, and safety of the structure, as well as providing much-needed high-quality housing in the neighborhood. Uh, while Victor is completely updating the building, he is not modifying the envelope of the structure or modifying the lot at all. Uh, this change in occupancy to return the second unit therefore requires relief for insufficient lot area because of this. Uh, additionally, the project also requires relief from insufficient open space. While there is some open space on the lot and Victor is adding decks to the rear of the structure, uh, he is not adding a roof deck, uh, but he knows that those, um, the community does not like those, and he is uh, continuing to be a good neighbor um, here as he has been and will continue to be. Uh, because of that, he's not adding the roof deck, and therefore, um, we need relief from, uh, insufficient open space. Uh, as I'm sure you'll hear from O N S, we held in the Butters meeting where they, uh, where this project receives support of the community. Um, you know, th- this, this will be a benefit to the community uh, and allow an appropriate use of this property. So, uh, with that, I would happily answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Um, just to confirm, um, where are you doing anything to basement? Is it just the existing floors that you're, you know, changing from one to two?
Um, so the answer to the, to that question is yes. Um, we are renovating the basement, but there are no living sp- there's no bedrooms in the basement. It is only living space in the base. Um, and we are, we are renovating, um, the otherwise existing floors. We're not adding any floors to this property.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. I will, uh, ask for public testimony.
Madam Chair and board members, good evening. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, this petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted at a Butters meeting on September sixteenth, uh, which one a butter was supportive and one other a butter had questions. Uh, the applicant coordinated with the City Point Neighborhood Association, which is in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Vanessa?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process with neighbors and the civic group. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Uh, motion, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
For as a second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A with the address of one thirty-nine Beach Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Anthony Ross. I'm an attorney with my office located at three forty-three Belgrade Avenue in Rosendale. I'm appearing, uh, this evening on behalf of the applicant's homeowners, David De Maray and Robin Hopkins. Uh, this proposal involves partially renovating the existing single-family dwelling uh, at one thirty-nine Beach Street. Specifically, the plan is to remove a portion of the existing rear deck and a small, single-story rear projection, replacing them with a two-story rear addition. The addition will increase the home's size by approximately five hundred and ninety-five square feet, allowing for an expanded kitchen on the first floor, an enlarged second-floor bedroom, and the addition of a, a second bathroom on the second floor. The only zoning violation, uh, is the proposed extension of the existing uh, side yard non-conformity. Uh, the property is in a one F six thousand single-family zoning district where the minimum required side yard is ten feet. The existing side yard on the side of the proposed addition, uh, requiring the variance is five point one feet. The plan extends that sidewall of the building by approximately nine and a half feet, increasing the depth of the main body of the house from twenty-six feet to approximately thirty-six feet. Importantly, uh, the existing side yard non-conformity is not being increased, rather it's merely being extended into the rear yard by nine and a half feet. Uh, the scope of the extension is seen best, um, on, uh, if you continue down on, uh, plan page A point one-one, which is a floor plan, right? That, that one's fine. Um, in the darkest yellow here is the non-conformity, the increase in the non-conformity. Uh, it's being increased, uh, the, the, the area, um, behind the line that shows the proposed new structure, the rear addition of nine and a half feet. Uh, the area in the two shades of, of orange, I'll call them. Um, the darkest is the extension of the non-conformity, uh, and the lighter color is the existing non-conformity. Uh, the variance being requested is not out of character for the neighborhood. Many of the properties on Beach Street, including the abutting homes on either side of my client's property, are similarly situated. Um, these properties are positioned off-center with conforming side yards on the left side and a narrow or non-conforming side yard on the right. Uh, during the community review process, a question was raised about the potential impact on sunlight by one of the owners of the abutting property to the right, uh, at one thirty-three Beach Street. Support our representation that we made at that, uh, community meeting that the addition within the the portion of the addition within the rear, uh, within the side yard setback would not significantly affect sunlight. My client's architect prepared, uh, a shadow study illustrations that we submitted. Uh, this variance, um, would allow my clients to enhance their living space to meet their family's needs without any inverse adverse impact on abutting properties or the community. Uh, and furthermore, um, this minimal variance, um, uh, aligns with the spirit and intent of the zoning code, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Rosendale Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which insisted of an abutters meeting. Uh, the abutters meeting was held on November seventh, where majority of their Butters were in support, and with one director Butter who did voice concerns regarding shadows and blocked sunlight, as well as egress and encroachment on the abutting property during construction. A civic meeting was not applicable to this project as they did not fall in a civic catchment area. Our office has also received two letters of support from our Butters. Thank you for your time, and the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we have a caller on six-one-seven, uh, six-four-five. Your, your, um, your mic is on. Are you looking to give testimony for this proposal?
Yeah, so my name is Mary Beth. Yeah, um, I'm at one thirty-three Beach Street, and we're a direct abutters to the property that's seeking the variance. And we did, um, object to the portion of the um, addition that's in non-conforming. Um, the property is so close to our driveway, and they have utilized our property and trespass to use it, so I won't get into that anymore, but also the sunlight. I mean, he said it would men, I, I don't know, we didn't see the studies, so we don't know what minimally affecting us, um, would be. Um, we've been in our home for twenty years. Um, the, my aunt who lives on the first floor is eighty-two years old. She has a sunroom and a kitchen that face that way, and she shouldn't be impacted by this addition when they can complete the addition on the non-conforming part of the property.
Thank you.
I think so. We have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Any other questions from the board? Would the applicant, uh, care to respond?
Um, sh- yes, um, so what we'd, uh, like to, uh, refer the board to is, uh, there are additional letters of support on file that I submitted to the board staff. In addition, uh, with respect to the abutting property at, uh, one thirty-three Beach Street, which is a two-family, um, uh, the distance between the two buildings is twenty-two feet. Uh, and the shadow study that we submitted confirmed the representation we made at the community meeting, which is that we didn't think that, uh, the addition being located, the small portion of the addition being located within the side yard setback would create any significant shadow fall on the building next door. And the shadow study that we submitted shows that the impact is primarily, uh, to the driveway of that, uh, abutting structure. And as I said, all the homes in the neighborhood have their driveway on the left side and, um, their, uh, uh, non-conforming side yard on the right side. And that is also true of, um, the Butters property, um, on the, um, uh, it has an insufficient side yard on its right side, and it is a much deeper structure than my client's, uh, home, and so my client's looking to have a non-conforming side yard that extends deeper into the rear yard, uh, but is not out of character with the neighborhood and is essentially asking, uh, that their structure be allowed to be um, in similar configuration to the homes around it, including the home to the right at one thirty-three.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A with the address of one twenty-one Harvard Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Attorney Margot Gillis from the Law Office of McDermott Quilty Miller and Hanley, and we represent Jen Korean Barbecue located at one twenty-one Harvard Ave, Austin. Members of the team are with me here tonight, and Jen Korean Barbecue is seeking relief for a conditional use permit on the second floor and variance for off-street parking to open a restaurant in the Harvard Ave, Community Commercial Sub District. So these are the existing site plans, and it was previously an office space. And the renovations for this space will be on the interior, and there will be no additional height to the building. So we are seeking a conditional use permit for restaurant use on the second floor, as well as a variance for off-street parking. The restaurant use is already an allowed on the first floor, so we just need the conditional use permit for the second floor so that the restaurant can operate on both floors. Um, the Jen Korean Barbecue is just a Korean restaurant that offers, um, the traditional Jen Korean barbecue grilling. And so the first floor has the kitchen, seating, restrooms, and a small storage space, and on the second floor, there's a service station and a small storage space and more seating. Um, we are also obtaining a liquor license, and, um, the hours of operation fit into the character, character of the community. Uh, Sunday through Thursday, they will be open starting at eleven A M with a closing time of eleven P M. Friday and Saturday, they are open a little later with an opening time of eleven A M and a closing time of one A M. The restaurant has two hundred and nineteen total seats with eighty-seven seats on the first floor and a hundred and thirty-two seats on the second floor. The mayor's office may speak to this, but we participated in the community process. We held in a Butters meeting on December eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, met with the Alston Civic Association on December eighteenth, and met with the B A I A on January ninth. There were no issues, and the process was generally supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted at a Butters meeting on December eleventh, at which no concerns were raised. Uh, they additionally presented to the Alston Civic Association, which is the active civic group in this area, which is in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex?
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Camarena. I am the District Director for State Representative Kevin Honan. Just wanted to come in to say, uh, the representative would like to be, uh, recorded in, um, favor of this project, uh, particularly citing the benefit that it will have on the Harvard Ave Business District. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
With all the support that the project is obtaining and that the use, um, works and is appropriate to its neighborhood, I'm going to propose a motion of, uh, approval. I'd like to put forth a motion of approval.
There a second?
Which I will, which I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case B O A with the address of ten to, to twelve Bagnell Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, uh, good evening. My name is David McNair. I'm the homo homeowner. Um, the variance in this case, uh, the, the bottom line is we're trying to put a shed dormer on the third floor of this, uh, now existing two-family house. Um, I've owned the house since nineteen ninety-seven with my sister. She's lived there continuously for those twenty-eight years. Um, yeah, the sum total of it with the dormers is that we'd modernize the house. We add living space. We'd have, add a home office, a dedicated home office. Uh, we'd upgrade H V A C from a steam heat. We'd add central air conditioning. There's no air conditioning now. Uh, we'd get a new roof. We'd remove a deteriorating chimney on the house and add high-efficiency water heaters and the rest. We'd also move a washer dryer to the main living floor. Um, moreover, you can see by, uh, one of the drawings, I think we just went past. When we bought the house many years ago, we didn't do any work, but the previous owner had work, uh, done that was likely not to code, so all of that would be remedied. Uh, the variance, uh, is requested because we exceed the floor area ratio and, uh, building height. There's also a side yard insufficiency, but again, there's no change in footprint on this renovation at all. In fact, there's no change in the exterior of the house except for the shed dormers on the third floor. Uh, in terms of precedence and neighborhood character, um, I live myself directly across the street. Um, I've already done this at a single-family home, put up shed dormers, uh, without issue. Um, there's another house two doors down on Aldi Street that's perpendicular to it. An entire third floor has been added. A mansard-style roof was put in. Um, that was done within the last, uh, two years or so. Uh, in terms of process, um, I applied for the building permit on November ninth, twenty-twenty-three, so I'm about fourteen months in. Um, I've done the Butters meeting. Uh, three people appeared, two had no, uh, issue with the project, one objected, uh, based, I guess, about how the project would look. Uh, that objector is not a direct Butter. He's two houses down and living in a home owned by his mother. Um, I've been through the also Civic Association meeting. I'm not sure of their decision, but, um, again, that same person called in to object on that. There were no other objections. I believe, but I'm not certain, that another neighbor, uh, has, has made a comment by email in support of the project. Um, he is a close neighbor who's directly across the street, but again, not in the butter. So I'd ask that the board allow the, uh, variance of the project to move forward.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted at a Butters meeting on October twenty-eighth, at which one a butter expressed opposition based on the perceived loss of a mature tree on the property, as well as the altering of the roof line of the property. Uh, other abutters did not make any comments in support or opposition. Uh, proposal was presented to the Alston Civic Association, who chose not to take a position. And with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A with the address of sixty-four Etna Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hello, my name is Emily Horges, and I am the owner of sixty-four Etna, and I live in the first four unit. Um, the two violations we were cited for were a Article One, Section Nine, um, where max allowed F A R exceeded for a finished basement and finished attic, and a max allowed number of habitable stories exceeded two and a half stories max. Um, so we're asking for a variance for the following reasons. Our house was built in nineteen twenty, so the lot is already too small, non-conforming. If you wanted to look at the table on A zero dot zero above. Um, and you'll see the numbers in red for that. It's, so it's already non-conforming. Um, the lot, according to the city, is three nine-nine-nine-one square feet, and we're supposed to have five thousand. Um, our architect measured it as three nine-nine-four. Um, and when our architect was measuring the gross area, um, as you can see, her numbers don't line up with what the city of Boston had recorded, and I discussed it with her because what she did was she included the, the, um, area in the basement, as well as the area in the unfinished attic, which she should not have done. So we went over it, and she believes that if you're just looking at the first and second floors, it does match that number of two-three-six-eight. And what we're actually proposing is we're just proposing that we finish the attic. We're not making any changes to the exterior. We're not adding a dormer. We're not changing the lot size at all. Um, and with the proposed renovations, um, she believes that the, the actual proposed square footage would be around two-nine-fifty, which would still exceed the F A R, so we would need a variance still. Um, the reason that we're asking for a variance on that grounds is, um, we actually live with our best friends, who we looked at the property with. They have four children. They live on the second floor, um, which as existing has uh, two legal bedrooms and one front room. And we're just trying to add two bedrooms in the attic so that they can live comfortably with their family. Um, the other violation we were cited for was exceeding two and a half stories, which I think that was actually an incorrect violation because our house is two and a half stories. Basement is not counted in stories, um, and we're not changing the exterior of the building at all. So I'm not sure why that was flagged as a violation um, when we're not changing anything to the exterior of the building. So this is the existing, uh, floor plan for the second floor. Um, and if you scroll further down, um, this is what the attic looks like now. And then what we're proposing and the existing outside of the building, if you want to keep going through the plans, um, all of this will be, is remaining the same.
Right, so to confirm, you're only doing interior changes?
Right, and only to the attic. Um, so the, the other thing that happened when we went in, in October, I went into inspectional services to figure out why we hadn't received our refusal letter yet. Um, and the inspectional services department raised the issue of maybe the basement might be counted towards livable space. And I panicked, and the inspectional services department added, um, legalized extension into the, the basement that was completed by a previous owner. So what's going on in the basement is that they put down flooring. Um, but it's not bedroom space. I don't know whether it counts as livable space or not, but we didn't do anything down there to change it. Um, and we're not planning on making it into a bedroom space or anything of that kind. Um, so I, I don't know whether that should be counted towards the F A R or not. Um, but we're not planning on doing anything with it, so the inspectional services wanted to include that to make sure that we weren't penalized for the actions of previous owners. Um, we have put in, like, we've borrowed against our retirement and, um, Taken out a home equity loan, um, what we're planning on doing is moving the stairs Um, in the second floor From where they are in the front room to the middle, so I think this shows the ex- the proposed changes, if you want to zoom in on this one. This is the electrical plants, we might have gone too far, but it, it does show If you want to go back up One more. So that's where the stairs will be moved to the middle of the house. Um, and if you want to go back up one more. Again, this shows we're not changing the exterior whatsoever. Um. I believe that the third, the second floor and the third floor proposed changes are still um, previous in the plans, if you wouldn't mind scrolling back up a page or two.
Any questions from the board?
But, no, I just, I just have a um A co- a comment where um In terms of the FAR, uh, I think it's good the way that it's been cited, um, whenever you do Even if it's an existing situation that you inherited. If, if your basement is considered habitable, you, you probably have, do you, what's the height of the ceilings?
Uh, it's, I, I don't know, but I don't believe it's seven feet, and there's no heat down there, so.
Okay, so it's in a storage, okay. All right, um. Uh, you know, I think The idea that you were cited For the fact of like extending living spaces in the basement and, and in the attic. That's just going to trigger FAR because it's considered additional square footage. Um, if you were to make it occupiable, I would just say make sure that you have, you do it per code, but I think it's It's good that you had been cited, just to correct any past Um, work that had been done in your house. In regards to, in regards to the two and a half stories, what I'm seeing, it is two and a half stories. That's something that you can take back to um, to the inspector, but for this purpose of this hearing, I think it's good that You're, they're, you're relying on the conservative measures of the, of the project to be approved, so Um, that's the only comment I have for the applicant.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think this um, this shows what the finished attic will look like this slide. So the stairs will come up in the middle, and there'll be two bedrooms added Just in the, the middle section Um, where the ceiling height um, will be Conforming to code, and then new windows will be put in that are code compliant as well. Um, and there'll be a play area Kind of off to the side, but we're not adding a dormer, and we're leaving the rest as storage and mechanical space, so that's Really all we're doing is moving the stairs and adding those bedrooms in the front and back of the building with windows.
Right. Do you have a section, uh, a cross-section Through that player area? In the drawings, let me see if I, if I can find the cross-section. Yeah, it's, keep going, so, keep going.
Mm-hmm.
Right here, okay, great, okay, yeah, it was a cross-section, okay. Um, I just wanted to make sure that you have a cross-section, that you have Uh, height to go th- to go upstairs to the attic, uh, just want to make sure that you have some good construction documentation for construction. I don't have any further questions, Chair. Dom?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, may we have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Members, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Uh, we hosted an abudders meeting on the seventeenth of December, at which no concerns were raised. The proposal was presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which voted to be supportive. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Better Bravo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have a re-discussion scheduled for five PM. That will be case BOA one six one Three eight seven nine With the address of forty-three to forty-five Wood Avenue. If the applicant and or the, their representative are present, will they please explain?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Sweeney of Morrissey Sweeney, two six one Main Street, Charleston. Appearing on behalf of the owners Larry Celester and his wife Aisha Celester. Uh, members of the board, this property uh, was approved for construction In late two thousand nineteen, and a two-family house was constructed. Uh, at the time, uh, there was an omission of a driveway for the second unit. There was an approval on, on a driveway on the left as you face the property. Um, and At a point in time, the applicant went back to the board. However, the uh, plans that were submitted at that time were somewhat confusing because the Applicant had already, there was on this property, uh, curb cuts. Uh, and they're not proposed, the applicant today was able to uh File an additional plan showing that those curb cuts are in place. Uh, there had been a question as to the loss of parking on the street. However, with the fact that the park, the, where it says proposed curb cut On, on this plan, there is a plan that was brought into ISD today, the engineer just finished it this morning. And in that plan, it shows that these curb cuts are actually there. The um Curb cuts will allow for tandem parking spaces as the driveway area that's in existence Is approximately fifty feet in length, as is the uh, proposed driveway on the right side of this two-family dwelling. Uh, the uh, proponents are on uh, line right now, uh, owners of the property, um. As I said, this, uh, I think when this was previously before the board on this issue of the additional parking, there was confusion Uh, in, in large part because of the plan that was submitted. Um. The uh The violations are non-conforming and insufficient open space. And
So can you confirm the driveway on the, the left exists?
Yes.
But, so, I'm looking I'm looking at construction photos, and in the construction photos Um, there are no There are no curb cuts, was that, were the, were the curb cuts done during construction?
Yes. And PIC uh, approved those.
Okay, so PIC approved the two curb cuts?
Correct. So what we're looking for is relief from the zoning on the right side. As I say, it should, it actually should have been in that initial filing when they, when they appealed, they appealed To construct this building, uh, for whatever reason, someone missed it.
Right, and, and um, we did receive Bob's um, from BTD's recommendation on, on the project. Um, and We also received B- Boston Plan Department's recommendation, which was to deny the project, but given The situation that you're in regarding PIC, giving you approval already for two curb cuts. Um. I can see why you're in front of us to actually implement those, that tandem driveway. Okay, I don't have any, any, any further questions.
So just to understand, there are curb cuts on both sides of the house at this point?
Yes, Mr. Stunbridge, you're right.
Okay. Uh, may we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting held on July eighteenth. With very few in attendance, no questions or concerns were raised. The project then went before uh, the Roseberry Ruskindale Radcliffe Neighborhood Association Uh, where they voted to support the project. Uh, there is no, there are no uh, letters of opposition or support received at this time. Thank you for your time, and the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to defer to the board for their judgment at this time.
Thank you. Aisha? You looking to give testimony here?
Hi, I'm Karen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I am actually the owner, um, along with my husband Larry Celester, and um, you know, this has been a long process. We've, we've tried to go through every Um, thing that, you know, has needed to be done, we followed all the processes. Uh, and um, we're just looking for relief to, to ensure that we're able to have um, these driveways.
Thank, thank you. Any other public comment?
No additional raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I mean, I, uh, is Caroline online?
Yes.
Yes, um, Caroline, I mean, this is a really interesting question regarding the order of things. Um, I would imagine that you would need zoning relief first before PIC can actually approve a curb cut. Um, how, how did the, how did the ordering of things? I don't know, how did the departments not kind of talk to one another?
I mean, that's a good question. I, I don't have an answer to that, I, that's something I can look into.
Yeah.
Um, but I unfortunately don't have a immediate answer to that.
Yeah, and especially if the applicant said that, um, uh, they, the legal counsel for the applicant said that Um, it was an error of the applicant to not have submitted the curb cut In the beginning, when they requested their first um, variance to build the project. So, okay, so I, I would love if, if there's a way that you can get back to us on this in terms of The ordering things in a department, between departmental approval. I would, I would, I would imagine that it would be first ZBA and then PIC. Um, but please correct me if I'm wrong, I would love to understand, and I'm sure my colleagues would, would also want to understand that process.
Yes, because you're definitely tomorrow, that could be something I work on.
Great, thank you. Um, Chair Dom, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, with that, is there a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval, given that Bob from BTD did review this project, and Also with the fact that PIC has already approved, approved the curb cuts, I'm going to move forward the motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Y- yes.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Better Bravo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Night, floor.